Welcome, everyone. Welcome to today's city council meeting. Today, Monday, January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera. District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District, District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand for the invocation by Jeff Thompson from Big Valley Grace Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the honor. Father, thank you for you. Thank you for this evening and this day that you've given us. We ask that as we have this meeting together that you give wisdom and discernment as decisions are made. We ask that our hearts and our minds would be focused on what you want and what's best for this community. We are so grateful for you. We ask that you would be glorified. We pray in Jesus.
Today, we do have a presentation. And this presentation is recognizing police chief Rick Collins and his life story. Chief, if you wouldn't mind, step up to the podium as I read his biography, followed by some certificates and plaques. Welcome, chief. Police Chief Collins is a local graduate of Sirius High School. He joined the Sirius Police Department as an explorer at age nineteen in nineteen ninety-five. He was hired by the, by Chief Peterson as a reserve officer. In nineteen ninety-seven, he was hired as a full-time officer where he was assigned to patrol. He was then assigned to Detective Bureau and worked as a financial crimes and high-tech crime investigator. Chief Collins was promoted to the rank of sergeant in two thousand and four and was assigned to the Patrol Division. During this time, he earned a BA in organizational leadership from Chapman University and a master's degree from Bradman University, also organizational leadership. In two thousand and eight, he was promoted to lieutenant where he managed the Department Special Operations Unit. In two thousand and fifteen, he was promoted captain. And in two thousand and nineteen, he was promoted chief. Chief Collins is a graduate, graduate of the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute, class of two hundred and thirty-five. He is also a graduate of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, class of two sixty-eight. For many years, Chief Collins devoted his time of the Sirius youth, of time, his time on Sirius Youth Sports. He coached youth soccer and served on the youth soccer board for three years. He also volunteered as a coach for youth baseball and is very involved in the Sirius community and this events. Congratulations, Rick Collins, on your retirement. At this moment, the city council will step up to the podium with you and we will present to you a plaque. Microphones on. In addition, we do have some other representatives who would like to also give you some plaques and certificates. Please step up.
Thank you, everybody. It's a truly an honor to be here today to rep, or to recognize you, chief, for your years of dedicated service. Uh, in your retirement, it's been a pleasure to get to know you over this last year, to see firsthand your leadership uh, and your care and uh, for the city of Sirius in Stanislaus County. So on behalf of Congressman John Duarte, United States Congress, want to thank you for your service as well, wish you the best in retirement. Thank you, sir.
Emphasizing thank you, everybody, for being here today for you, Chief Collins. And we talked about it a little bit earlier, but Chief will never leave you. It will always be with you. And I think that is something you should take and hold with you forever because you put in the work and you not only chose public service, but you also chose to go back to Sirius, your hometown. So thank you for that. And on behalf of California State Senate, congratulations.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Danielle and I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Juan Alanis. It's an honor to present this resolution to thank you for your dedication and service to the city of Sirius and to congratulate you on retirement. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief, do you have any words?
I'll make it quick. Uh, thank you to everybody who honored the recognition and it has been my pleasure to serve the city of Sirius as a police officer for over thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before I move on, is there any comments from the council? You can turn the microphone on. Yes, you may.
I couldn't reach the button. I guess semi-retired chief now. I met you out on the soccer field when my son was playing many, many years ago, and I appreciate the leadership that you played both on the field with our youth, being a mentor and a leader for our youth, showing them exactly where it's at. I appreciate the years you've done. I know we've met on and off about various issues over the years. And I appreciate what you've done, um, both for our youth as well as our community. And I just want to thank you for your years dedication and the culture that we even have in the police department. They always have always talked very highly of you, the community talked very highly of you. I see you're always nominated for something because of all the volunteerism that you do as a community and supporting our community. And I just want to thank you for your time here and I know, um, I hope our new chief will be just as effective and beneficial as you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to citizens' communications. The city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings. Adopted rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution number two thousand and seven, one oh six, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits city council from taking any action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda, unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council and any agenda items subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chambers doors. We'll begin with in-person comments, and I do have a yellow card. I believe the first person today will be Elizabeth Vasquez. I noticed, Elizabeth, that you did check off number, item number fifteen.
Yes.
So if you would like to wait, that is actually a, a public hearing, it'd probably be best that you hold your comments for that particular item. Just wanted to make sure you're okay with that. Is that okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gavin? Heard you have a report for us today.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, council members, city staff, community. Thank you, Gavin Klein, Congressman Duarte's office. Just want to give you all a quick update. Uh, Congressman Duarte has continued to advocate for California's thirteenth congressional district in our nation's capital in Washington, DC. Uh, Congressman Duarte has voted for every continuing resolution to keep government open and working families and, and working for the families in the thirteenth district. It's important that we continue addressing our government spending problem while making sure we minimize the disruptions to the government, um, to the federal programs that so many of our constituents rely on. Uh, we have to make better spending decisions and ensure that we do not bankrupt, um, our country's future. This was the best option available us, to us at the time, but Congressman Duarte remains hopeful that the budget for two thousand and twenty-four's fiscal year will include common sense decisions on government spending to cut inflation and revive our economy. And the congressman also remains on the three, um, main committees, agriculture, natural resource, and transportation infrastructure, which are very important to the California's thirteenth congressional district. Um, and another, uh, we had our military nomination process that I've talked about here before. Uh, it's an opportunity for the congressman to give nominations to high school seniors who are interested in the service academies. Uh, we were able to have a great nomination process and interviews with multiple nominations given out to the United States Naval Academy, Air Force Academy, uh, Merchant Marine Academy, as well as West Point. Um, and it was truly an honor this past Friday to be a part of the Sirius Community Service Awards. Uh, it is great for the city of Sirius to come together and be all the good that's really being done here. So thank you all for your time and send it to our report.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Danielle Morgen, and I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Juan Alanis. And tonight's report, I just wanted to give you a quick update of the assembly member's standing committees. With the new year, we have a new legislative season, and so every, uh, session, we change our standing committee. Um, the assembly member is Vice Chair for Public Safety, Vice Chair for Agriculture, Business and Profession Labor, Military and Veterans Affairs, Water, Parks, and Wildlife. And just this past week, we've also been able to introduce eight new bills, uh, for the new year. While these bills are still fresh and new, we hope to continue to get them passed into the assembly for. Um, a few of them are AB seventeen nine six, a requirement for schools to distribute information on available career technical education programs to parents. AB eighteen thirteen, senior citizens rental assistance. AB eighteen seventeen, homeless youth assistant program. Eighteen, AB eighteen thirty-nine, hiring incentives and grants for local law enforcement agencies. AB eighteen forty-five, retail theft grants for local law enforcement agencies, and AB eighteen fifty-nine, requirement for reporting of tranquilized deaths. Thank you. And if there's anything that the Office of Assemblymember Juan Alanis can do, or if the Assemblymember himself, please don't hesitate. I'm reaching out.
Thank you very much. Is there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment? Oh, yes, we have one person.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening, council members and the public. Uh, my name is Destiny Suarez. I'm with Senator Alvarado Gil's office, and I will also be giving a brief report. Um, starting off really quick, Senator did previously introduce a bill, a brand-new one for this legislative season. It's SB nine hundred and five. It's focusing on wildfire smoke health outcome state data act. This bill will focus to address the health and economic impacts of wildfires smoke across California, which is really important right now and is connecting with the insurances, uh, agencies and issues we're going through. And this is the only, the, the beginning of legislation. We look forward to push out a lot more. And then, um, team Alvarado Gil is also exploring new innovative ways to communicate our legislative and policy updates. Um, per request of our constituents, we will be doing this via our website, social media, email blast, as well as hosting many more mobile office hours, um, throughout the district. We are also just wrapping up on our two thousand and twenty-three annual report, which is like a magazine kind of where we have a bunch of data of, you know, all the time Senator's been in the district, all the, um, cases we've helped, and it just really highlights the Senator's first year as California State Legislature. We did have the honor to attend the successful event that the Sirius Chamber of Commerce hosted, hosted recognizing all the community service award winners. That was really beautiful, and she had the privilege of speaking and talking about the importance of community service and implementing those, um, grassroots to make bigger change. And then last but not least, we are taking nominations for Woman of the Year to be recognized on the state level. We are pushing out a lot of the information tomorrow via our social media, and then we'll also be doing it for email blasts. And then I hope to come back prior to the deadline to give, um, more information or, uh, physical copies of that. And then last but not least, Senator is continuing to remain accessible within the district. She's been planning a lot of days in Stanislaus County specifically and has been doing a few, uh, series events along the way. We want to emphasize that our office is available in Modesto on Fifteenth Street, Monday to Friday, nine to five. Um, if the constituents, the public is in need of state agencies such as EDD, Housing, or DMV, please, we want to remain accessible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, sir. You state your name.
Well, good evening, council members, Vice Mayor, Mayor Lopez. My name is Joshua Lepper, and I'm a representative of Labor's International Union of North America. Chief negotiator for the miscellaneous bargaining here at the city of Sirius for the past fourteen years. He comprised eighty percent of workforce here at the city outside our respected brothers and sisters of the PLA. The laborers union is the exclusive bargaining representative of your planning, building, finance, streets, water, wastewater, code enforcement, police dispatching, fleet mechanics, and parks and recreation departments here at the city. I am here tonight to express some concerns for the record as they relate to our collective bargaining agreement and our labor management relationship. Through our MOU, city recognizes the union as the exclusive bargaining representative of this unit. And as such, as a duty, solely negotiate any aspect of wages, hours, or working conditions with the unit. There can be no direct dealing with any department, employee, or group of employees within the unit as it relates to said wages and hours and working conditions. Understanding that we have had a retention and recruitment difficulties here at the city over the last several years. I would truly be remiss if I did not highlight the glaring need for a class and compensation study. As I am sure you are aware, our contract, along with several other units, fires at the end of June. We will begin opening negotiations in the coming months. But absent a can, a compensation and class study, we will not know, and the city cannot know, where we are at in the market. We cannot know if we are competitive or not. Some may feel that there are more important things to spend ARPA relief funding on. But if we cannot keep our workforce intact, we are going to have a very hard time serving our community. I ask you to remember that our motto here is not separate, we achieve. It is together, we achieve. I hope that we remember that as we work toward the best possible contract for every one of these units and each and every one of these great men and women that served the city of Sirius. Now, lastly, I want to give great respect, accommodation, Chief Collins. I too went to Sirius High School back in the nineties. Remember Rich? Rick, as you know him, when he played football for us, Cowboys football. He's a reflection of the solidarity, the community, and the relationships that we have at the city of Sirius. We went through changes in leadership over time, not only on the dais, but in terms of city managers, human resources directors, finance directors. I want you to remember it's the workers here that every single day get up and come to work. They are this city. And as leaders, my daddy taught me when we were young, you could never be a leader until you learn to follow. So I hope that in my words, you hear not just for my unit, but the other units. As we enter into negotiations, this world has changed. Cost of living has risen, and we look to all of you for your leadership, helping us make ends meet and allowing us to continue to serve this great city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to speak? Welcome. Please state your name.
My name is Ashley. I was a public safety dispatcher at the Sirius Police Department for four years. My last day of series was November twenty-ninth. The dispatch center currently has three dispatchers. Three people responsible for work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, nights, weekends, holidays. As of November, there was an open secretary position that started, starting pay was two dollars an hour more than what a dispatcher makes. In two thousand and twenty-one, starting pay for a dispatcher was nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Today, in two thousand and twenty-four, that starting pay is twenty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. In three years, the annual pay has increased three thousand, seven hundred dollars a annual. However, in two thousand and twenty-one, the city manager was making thirteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and ten a month, and is currently making seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars a month. If you calculate that into an hourly rate, that's twenty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents an hour for a raise. It's more than what dispatchers make. While the dispatchers, people sacrificing their family dinners, their kids bedtime or sports, their sister's surgery, you got a dollar and eighty-two cents. Vice Mayor Silveira, when you ran for council in two thousand and twenty, your campaign heavily focused on supporting first responders, public safety. Putting your twenty-nine years as Deputy Silveira, the first thing on all of your campaign flyers was public safety and using your experience to make sure we had the resources we need. As a deputy, isn't your biggest resource, your dispatcher? How can you ensure a safe community when there's no one to answer citizens' calls? Mayor Lopez, during the October ninth council meeting, you told me, we'll do everything in our power because you said something that resonated. You don't want to leave Sirius. Since then, four dispatchers have left, and from my understanding, a fifth one is very close. What has been done? You five lead this city. All of the power is in your hands. What happens when you only have two dispatchers left? What happens when Lieutenant Johnson is the only person left dispatching? How does that affect the department? How does it affect, affect the city? When he can't do his actual job because he's doing a dispatcher's job? There was a narrative painted at the October twenty-third meeting that council cannot act on something not on the agenda. The Brown Act generally prohibits action and discussion. However, the part that you left out of that was unless it's deemed an emergency by the legislative body. California Government Code fifty-four, nine fifty-six point five subsection A, paragraph one defines an emergency as work stoppage, crippling activity, or other activity that severely impacts public health, public safety, or both. As determined by the majority of members of the legislative body, I guess my only question to leave you with, the audience, the citizens watching via Zoom, what constitutes an emergency in the eyes of this council if not the public safety of its constituents? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to speak? Seeing none. Is there any emails? Several.
Yes, we do have one email. This is from Munir Obaid, to whom it may concern. Good evening. I'm Munir Obaid, one of the Magic Market owners. Since the median was installed on Morgan and Service Road, my business has been affected a lot. My business supports my family and my partner's family. Also, we have four employees working in the business with us, so this is affecting a lot of families. We have no choice to start sadly firing some of our employees. Until now, we haven't heard anything back from you guys. Can you please find a solution to have an access to our business? Munir Obaid.
That is it. Okay. Thank you very much. This public period is now closed. Is there anyone in the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing none. Do you have one? During the consent calendar portion of this? For, for consent calendar, you have a conflict of interest?
Mayor?
You, you're, you're aware of this?
I, I believe that council member, um, the council member will have a recusal item for an agenda item. We can do that at this time, or we can do it right, right when the item begins. So either way, I'll, I'll defer to the mayor on that.
He, so it's on the, not on the consent, but on one of the agenda items of the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, I think that we should wait until the public hearing, then he can excuse himself. That's okay? Thank you very much. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone in the council would like a consent item pulled for further discussion? I see two buttons have been pressed. I'll start from my left side. Councilmember Martinez, what numbers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number ten.
Item number ten. Councilmember Rosa Linda, which numbers?
Seven and eleven.
Seven and eleven. I go back to council for a motion. Is there, actually, is there anybody in the public that would like an item pulled from the consent calendar? Seeing none. I bring this back to the council.
Make a motion to approve items one through six, eight, nine, and twelve of the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Vera.
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number seven.
I have a couple of questions about this, um, primarily about the fleet trucks, why it seems suddenly like a rush, um, why it wasn't budgeted. Is there a way we can, um, budget these maybe differently? Are we working on any grants and what the legislation is regarding going, um, EV or ZEEV, which is, I believe, the reason why we had to go electric for our public works? I was wondering what we weren't doing or having the same requirements as we did with the last vote.
Good evening, council, uh, Ms. Vera, uh, the, the, the reason, uh, we're trying to push these vehicles, uh, to be delivered on time is because they're available. And trying to get these vehicles available, the availability of the vehicles nowadays is, is really, really hard to get. So the vendor is committing to have these vehicles, uh, for us, uh, once, once the council approved the, uh, uh, the agreement or the, uh, uh, the resolution tonight. Uh, as, as you know, these vehicles, the turnaround for vehicles for both public works is between ten to twelve years. Uh, vehicles on, that I'm listing tonight, uh, has an average between fifteen to twenty years. So they're really due for replacements. Uh, these vehicles are continuously in repairs. Uh, we are almost depleting the funding, uh, for the repairs funding for these, uh, of, uh, the budgeted funding for, uh, the, the repairs that we need to do for these, uh, vehicles. So that's the reason why I'm, I'm trying to bring this as, as quickly as I can. Uh, these vehicles are in need, you know, they're twenty years old. And, uh, we, we're, like I said, uh, we are continuing on repairs and we're depleting the budget for repairs from the water, wastewater in the street. So that, that's, that's the reason why. As, as far as the EVs, um, Ms. Vera, the, uh, uh, we, we are trying our, uh, we, we are trying to have one vehicle. So we just want to experience that to see exactly how that would impact our, uh, our fleets, uh, as, as far as maintenance. So we, we're, we're trying that route to see exactly how that vehicle will fit in, and then maybe in a future purchase, we'll, we'll, we'll be committed to the EV.
I thought there was some legislation about of us needing to go by, I believe it was two years from now or a year from now. So I just want to make sure we're not having to rebuy the vehicles you're asking for today in a year to be compliant with state law.
Right now, we can go ahead and buy regular vehicles. What happened is California Air Resources Control, also those, uh, CARB, uh, failed to apply for the permit from the EPA. And so they put that off, uh, for enforcement or anything else for the state of California indefinitely. And so they put that off, uh, for enforcement or anything else for the state of California indefinitely until they get that permit from EPA. So there is no follow-through that we have to observe before we're towards EV right now.
But ultimately, we're going to run into that loophole because it is state requirement of my understanding.
Eventually, yes.
And then, um, lastly, have we talked to the grant writer about grants like, as we did with the last one, and we're not doing any grants or offsetting this fund at all?
We did get some money through the, uh, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, uh, to two and twenty thousand dollars to help offset part of the cost on one of them, uh, because it is electric vehicle, the other ones, uh, there are no other grants I'm aware, are you, Sam?
Yeah, we just, ju- just that one, uh, that, that's the only one that we presented to council a while back. That's the only vehicle that we're, uh, we're getting the reimbursement of twenty thousand dollars for.
Councilmember Casey?
A, a couple of questions. The first is, uh, every one of the vehicles we're purchasing extended warranty, uh, isn't, you know, uh, and who purchased vehicles? They use, use up the free warranty and then normally manufacturer will offer you some sort of deal on the extending the warranty as opposed to paying, I think each one of those vehicles is twenty-five hundred dollars extended warranty. I'm not sure that that's a practice, practice. And the other thing is, uh, I personally have feel it's very important to do everything locally. But in this large dollar amount, uh, I wonder, did you go out to Chevy's Ford out of town? Did you, did you, did we seek competitive bids? This is a large sum of money. And again, Rush Ford is someone that we used, Country Ford before that. I think it's important to buy locally, but at the same time, we have an obligation to the citizen. Perhaps we could save fifty, sixty thousand dollars? I, I'm not sure. The question is, do we need the extended warranty? And did we go out to bid on these vehicles? That's the question.
Uh, Mr. Casey, uh, first of all, the vehicles became available from Rush Ford. And there are, uh, the sole spend, the sole vendor that is a government-approved, uh, vendor to, to purchase these vehicles with the, with the government, government rate. So therefore, the, we, you know, we, we use them all the time. And, uh, the availability is really what dictates, uh, how fast we could move by purchasing these vehicles. The other, the other thing about the extended warranty, I mean, with the, with today's technology, these vehicles come equipped with a lot of, uh, a lot of sensors and a lot of, a lot of mechanical issues or planning issues that we face. So therefore, the extended warranty would be an ideal thing to have.
So the question though, did, did we look at, uh, other dealers in the, you know, two-hundred-mile radius about the availability? Or we just assumed that always, you know, that Rush Ford had them and that's the one that we should buy? And back to the extended warranty, is it, is the extended warranty for twenty-five hundred dollars a piece covering more than the basic warranty that comes with the first thirty-six thousand miles or whatever it is?
Uh, I'm not, I'm, I really don't know the details, Mr. Casey, about the extended warranty. That is something that I could, uh, really come back with you on. Uh, but I know with today's vehicles, like anybody, I mean, with, with, with the electronics and with all the gadgets that they have, um, it'll be beneficial to have that extended warranty in place just to get, get, get peace of mind that, that you have a car that you could, in case if it goes bad, you, you could go ahead and, and, and get it to the dealer and, and repair it with no cost. And as far as the, as far as the, the, uh, getting other bidders in, uh, uh, I mean, I don't have an answer for you. There's something that I could come up with, come, come around and tell you exactly how we got to this point. But the availability is really what dictates, uh, where these purchase, I mean, these vehicles are not available anywhere else. Uh, you have to put your name on a list, you have to make sure that they're, that they have them available and to be delivered on time.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Any other additional questions? Any members of the public would like to make a comment on this item?
Good evening, council, John Warren, City of Series. The, uh, or the line item number seven is asking for two hundred thousand dollars budget adjustment. These vehicles should have been replaced probably over the last four. Money was supposed to have been in place for the purchase of these vehicles in the last four. So I'm assuming that roughly at fifty thousand dollars a vehicle, there should be a couple hundred thousand dollars in the budget that's already in place, that hasn't been spent on something else, that should be available. Maybe fifty or sixty thousand dollar adjustment might be necessary. My question is, part of the money go that was supposed to be used to purchase vehicles over the last few years, and we couldn't purchase them because they weren't available. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? Seeing none. I bring this back to the council.
Make a motion to approve item seven of the consent calendar?
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
No.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries three two.
Okay. Moving on to item number ten. Resolution number twenty twenty-four, approving the use of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds for cost of field upgrades. And this goes to Daniel Martinez, council member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of questions for Joey, and I also noticed, uh, out there in the crowd was CYB President Jorge. If you wouldn't mind coming up, I had a couple of questions for you as well, sir. Uh, so Joey, I noticed in the packet you provided both Grover and Artificial Turf's, uh, quotes. And I was wondering if you could give us the basic differences, since it seems one of them is for a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Uh, and Artificial Turf's quote is for seventy-two thousand, so that's quite a substantial difference. And I am aware that Artificial Turf just did Series High School's, uh, varsity softball field, so they have experience in the city locally renovating. So I was wondering if you could compare that for us?
Well, go ahead and give you another microphone.
Yes. So, um, with the, with the two quotes, um, Artificial Turf Landscaping is tied in with the, uh, with our local vendor. And then also, um, Grover Landscaping, they got, they got the same, same mix with like that seventy-thirty field mix, uh, of the grade, install packing of the dry clay at the, the batter boxes, install conditioner, um, and drag and smooth out the infills, fertilize the outfield where aerating, um, provide the outfield with mowing and one mowing after like ten days. Um, and then also spray the outside fence line. So they both got the same, same quote. Um, when I seen, when I contacted Grover Landscaping, you know, they came out and it looked and it seemed more high maintenance, high, you know, really getting to the detail. And I said, "I would love to see your quote." And, you know, they were kind of hesitant because they didn't want to give a quote if they weren't going to get, get the, get the, get the job. So, um, I, I said, "I really appreciate any quotes on this," and they did, and it came back within, over the weekend. And it came out at a hundred and fifty-one, almost a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars compared to seventy-two thousand. The other company, I, I, I trust them, I've seen their work. This is prevailing wage. So, I mean, there's a, there's a big price difference. With all the, with all the pricing, with option, say, option one, with all the stuff, even with the, with the, um, fencing, signs, trimming of the trees, that first option one comes out to like ninety-one thousand. You add in option two with Grover Landscaping, total cost for, same thing with option one, it comes out to a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, that only leaves us with twenty-five thousand dollars for like moving forward. Um, for like project number two to work forward, so, um, there's a big difference there.
Yes, sir, okay. And so staff's recommendation is for us to pick one of option, either you said A, which was Artificial Turf?
Yes.
And B, which was Grover?
Yes.
Okay, so A would, A would leave us with a substantial amount of money to continue, uh, projects at, at the ballfields?
Yes.
Okay, and then I had a question also about, uh, let's see, West Coast Arbiter's quotes, uh, it seemed a little high to me. It's seven trees being trimmed for almost five thousand dollars. Um, and I know that they are above the, the batting cages. I know it's a, it's a critical area that needs to be trimmed. Is, is it possible to rebid that quote out? Maybe see if we can get more?
Yes, I talked to Sam and I'll reach out to Elite. I did get a rough estimate from Grover, and I didn't put it in here because he didn't send me the paperwork.
Okay.
It's, it's, they quoted me a little roughly about eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, so Grover, yes, it's a high-end, high-end art, but West Coast, we do, the city does a lot of business with West Coast.
Yes, sir.
But we do have Elite, um, I can give con- uh, contact with Elite, um, tomorrow and get a bid as soon as possible and bring that back.
Okay, last question for you, Joey. Uh, if we move forward and I, we're able to pass, uh, with either option A or B, do you know what the timetable will look like to get the fields renovated? Because I know, uh, Coach Jorge, do, do you know tentatively the opening day ceremony started the season, any of that?
The opening ceremonies for, thank you, uh, for hearing me today and, uh, inviting me for the meeting. Um, the opening ceremonies for the league are March twenty-second, but, uh, in the middle of February, um, we have a tournament scheduled. And then Mahansley Middle School starts playing arrow fields, and Series High School has a tournament scheduled, uh, for the first weekend in March. So it is very important that we have those fields up and running by after President's Day weekend.
So this is very crucial, and it's, you know, we were waiting for the prevailing wage, what we had to do. So I think, you know, if it's approved tonight, that's probably the first action we'll take is getting those fields done, because it's going to take at least a good week and a half, possible two weeks to get those done. Now with the weather, it's going to be a big delay in the weather. The fields are underwater. And so it's, this is in desperate, desperate need. Anything else on here, it can, it can happen like that. Real quick, I think the fields are a number one priority at, at this point.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. Well, thank you, Coach Jorge. Uh, anything else you'd like to, to say before you?
The, the only thing that I want, and Joe is aware of this, um, the lightning on field three. I know the prior, uh, board members and, uh, I've been asking for it, is very, very important that we get that lighting done. Uh, I've talked to Collins, uh, and there was another quote that we had received for the repair or the replacement of the bulbs. But, uh, after the meetings that we had with Joey, uh, and, uh, seems like it's going to be part of another project. I wanted to see if there is a way that we can prioritize that, uh, and move it forward as quick as possible, because I've seen gets like just moving out of the way because the ball not there, not being able to see the ball, you, you're someplace there. You know, just ask him how it is. Seeing the ball coming, they just move out of the way. They know the wall is somewhere in there, but they cannot see it. So it is really dangerous, uh, playing for that field. And based on what Collins told me, uh, called electricity from, uh, the guy that came was Stockton, uh, but they have a, another shop here in Madera. Uh, he told me that the lifespan of those bulbs is at the end. So I don't know when they were replaced initially, but they're at the end. So whether we, th- they make the change to LED or replace them with the same kind, just new one, it should be, it should be way better. All I got to say.
So replacing those bulbs, I think if we go to the existing bulbs, um, they're, they're, they're about a two-year lifespan. Um, so I don't know when's the last time they've been changed, but then also I'm reaching out to City of Turlock. Um, they are, they're replacing all five fields with new LED lights, whole fixtures, everything. I drove by there at night.
Ready?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's beautiful, they're, they're really not, and they're still out there. It's, it's been a two-week project. So I'm actually have a call, send an email today to see what, who they're going through, what's the cost, what kind of lights they're putting in.
Yes, sir.
Just a rough estimate, what we can do here and just have that in our back pocket.
Right, and I believe the mayor and city manager are aware of that as well. We went out and did a tour of the facility, and that was something the city manager had mentioned, wanted to upgrade the light fixtures as well. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question for Joey. Just to recap, you said that, uh, Artificial Turf is actually the lesser bid, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, I mean, I think that it's important that we, there is some kind of a cost savings, and, and they actually did, serious, huh, you said, council member?
Yeah, so I'm aware, uh, from California Landscape Supply, they, they make the seventy-thirty infield clay around here, so they are the ones that provide it to anybody that does field renovations.
Okay.
And, and Ryan Thornberry, uh, and Nick had informed me that, uh, Artificial Turf had just done Series High School's softball fields.
Okay. Uh, I, I will support this item if we go with that, mentors.
And then, uh, a little bit of moral background, like two, three years ago, California Landscaping did like, uh, uh, they donated their time and some materials, and they did a really good job on actually on field three. Now it needs to be done again, but they did a really good job on basic, uh, domain itself.
Thank you.
As I'm aware, they can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any additional, oh, I see, uh, I don't know who pressed the button first, but we'll go to Vice Mayor Silveira? Uh, actually, uh, sure, we'll, we'll go ahead and we'll take a comment from you then, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor.
My name's Shane Park. I run a couple, few businesses here, pretty good taxpayer, give back to the community a lot. A real tough time supporting CYB. I've asked for the last ten years to bid on their uniforms, that sort of thing, and I've got zero call from them, I've been to meetings, everything, and, and still they take their business out of town. As a taxpayer, I've had a tough time with some of this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Uh, back to you, Vice Mayor. So Joey, just my rough math, a little under a hundred thousand dollars if we were to, to go with everything that's presented with the option A of, of, uh, not the, not Grover, the other one?
Yeah, so it's about, it's about ninety-one thousand. And then minus, if we do get, um, Elite to come in lower, then we're, maybe we're at eighty-nine thousand. So we have, for next round, we have other op- more money to play with the upgrades of the facility.
Correct me if I'm wrong, put away, put aside two hundred thousand dollars towards this? So the roughly a hundred thousand dollars we have left over could potentially pay for the light situation?
Yeah, I'm just waiting to see with, with a quote, if.
Or at least, or at least put a pretty good dent in it?
Yes, like field three, if we have to just change the bulbs out, we can do that. I don't think the bulbs are.
Not a hundred thousand dollars.
No.
Just for the bulbs.
If I know what size of bulbs, what, where I came from or said, I'm talking probably that field, you're probably talking a thousand dollars max.
Okay, I just want to make sure the numbers were right, and then we still have roughly a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Going forward for the rest of the projects?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Uh, did you want to? Oh, is this, is this, uh, between you two?
No, just.
Oh. Did you want, did you want clarification? Absolutely, go ahead, sir.
So in regards to this comment, I just became, uh, resident, as you guys are aw- aware of CYB. We had a contract or semi-contract with the person that we were dealing with the uniforms. I'm giving him my word that next time up, when it comes up for contract for uniform, I will get in contact and invite him and open it up to anybody in the city, um, and, um, and get the job.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Uh, councilmember Rosalinda?
Yes, my question is towards Joey, um, just hearing the urgency with the President's, the CYB president, are we able to get some of the needs that he wants done in the timeframe that he is discussing before the season starts? Because at that point, it sounds like we're going to have to put it off.
So the main, the main focus is, is doing the field renovation. That's, once we get approved, get everything moving forward, set the contract, move forward. If you hope for this, it's, it's gonna, you know, we're just fighting weather now. So i- i- it can take time, it can, we can maybe start it in two weeks, or it can be a month. Because the rain we got today, the rain we're getting on, it's just going to pile up and pile up. So right now, it, the weather's against us right now.
And are you aware that this may not be done before your President's Day deadline that you're stating?
Aware. And a little bit of a contingency plan. Because when I talked to Ryan from California Landscaping and gave him the timeframe that he could get everything done in two weeks, he would go one field at a time, so that we might not be able to use the five fields, but we might be able to use a couple of, three of them, something depending on what the weather.
Okay. Any other questions? Is that it? Any members of the public would like to make any additional comments? Any members of the public would like to make any additional comments?
The series. On the renovation of cost fields, I understand the whole project and everything. I'd like to know, maybe Joey can answer that question from Parks Recreation. A few months ago, I was in Sunnyvale, California. I grew up there. They had a park there. They have a a replacement of AstroTurf or whatever you want to call the newest stuff they got out today. And it's as big as regular football stadium. It's huge. I'm talking to people in the park. They have quite a maintenance program to take care of that. There's drainage, there's, you know, uh, animal feces that get on there and all kinds of stuff. You have to keep that clean. My question is, where's the extra money going to come from, the manpower to take care of this thing? So people can enjoy it and it not be a burden for maintenance that's not maintained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any additional comments? Seeing none, I bring this back to council.
Make a motion to accept item ten of the consent calendar going with artificial turf and landscape.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
I.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item number eleven, resolution number twenty twenty-four, approving the part-time, non-regular employee hourly rate, schedule effective in pay period beginning February fourth, twenty twenty-four. Rosalinda, this was yours, correct?
Yes, um, and the reason why I pulled this was, I know we've had a couple sessions or kind of discussions about some of the needs that we have in this city, especially when it comes to wage and getting even a wage classification survey done, especially pending. So I was just wondering, are we working in good faith with the union? Does this open us up to, you know, unfair labor practice liability? And that's, I guess, is my biggest concern is making sure that, especially with the union already expressing that they don't feel we're working with them or the city's doing their diligence. So I just want to make sure that we're doing what we need to be um, when it comes to our employees.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, council members, these positions are part-time extra help and they're not represented by any labor agreement.
The ones that, um, I think on there, there was a comment in there. I thought the dispatchers are in there. Are they not?
These are reserves. They're only part-time.
And they're not covered under the union? And then, um, I think one of them said something about minimum wages or a reason why those that weren't making minimum wage not brought to the council for approval prior to the law in effect, because generally minimum wage is known by everyone well in advance.
Correct. So we don't have anyone currently in those lower classifications that were um below the minimum wage. Otherwise, we would have brought it up prior. So as long as we approve it now, before we hire somebody would be okay and we could be within the.
And this doesn't open us up for any uh ULP liabilities? Unfair labor practices?
They're not represented.
The labor board?
They're not represented positions, no.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments from the council? Any members of the public would like to make a comment? Seeing none, I bring this back.
Make a motion to accept item number eleven of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
I.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, we'll start off with item number thirteen. This is resolution number twenty twenty-four, approving the increase of the per vendor per day fee for the flea market vendors. And this, I believe, item is for you, Mr. Christopher.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, a little bit of background first. In nineteen ninety-four, the city council approved a resolution to set flea market vendors, um, fee for flea market vendors in the amount of one dollar per day per space. At the time, this fee primarily affected the series flea market located, which is closed. Twenty twelve El Ramatito Flea Market annexed into the city of Series, subsequently obtained an updated conditional use permit in March of twenty fifteen. One of the conditions of approval, which persists today, is that the applicant quote, may be required to collect a business license fee as determined by the Director of Finance per day in lieu of individual business licenses. The amount that has been applied to El, it's the same amount specified in the nineteen ninety-four resolution. Since twenty fifteen, El Ramatito Flea Market has collected business license fees from flea market vendors and remit more than two hundred thousand dollars to the city. Well, approving the proposed fee um increase from one dollar to two dollars per vendor per day is in the best interest of the citizens of Series and the general welfare of the citizens of Series. Furthermore, the owner of El Ramatito Flea Market has communicated to city staff through their attorney that the proposed fee increase is acceptable. And I see Nelson Gomez is here uh representing. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. And we now open the public hearing. If there's anybody in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item, I know I do see Nelson. I would like to give you your, the first opportunity to speak on this item, sir. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, Nelson Gomez, I'm the attorney for the El Ramatito. Uh, we have, for you a letter that I sent to Mr. Uh, at the beginning of December, which uh I indicated that I had discussed the matter with my clients. They're in agreement to go ahead, uh, agree to pay two dollars per vendor per day uh, under this particular resolution. Um, in order to go ahead with the amendment, the conditional use permit, which they have um requested to the planning commission. This particular matter was to go before the planning commission on February fifth, twenty twenty-four, and I believe this is the only item that we are waiting for in order to be able to complete that uh process so that we can go before the planning commission consideration. More than happy to answer any questions you may have regarding to our position.
Thank you, Nelson. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? We'll come back to you if you have additional questions. Anybody else like to make a comment during this time? Yes, sir. Please step up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John Warren, City of Series. Under the previous agreement dating back to nineteen ninety-four, which was a dollar per day per vendor, it was a specific note at the bottom of that agreement that said the uh flea market was to pay that restitution or remit payment to the city on a weekly basis with list of vendors. I kind of looked over the new letter that was presented, uh, and I'm glad that applicant is in agreement with the dollars, but there didn't seem to be anywhere in agreement how payment was going to be permitted to the city. If there was going to be a list of vendors, some way of making an audit of what's going on, what actually takes place. So I was wondering if that's something that should be there as to how the city's going to receive their fund, often going to receive it. With some notation as to the number of vendors that were actually at the facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment or questions? Um, was there any emails in regards to this item?
Or no, there were no emails uh received for this item.
Okay, there's no emails, okay. Uh, public period is now closed. I bring this item back to council for discussion and questions and action. Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Casey?
This goes to Christopher. Um, is this, I mean, I thought that the use permit was extended, is, and we were going to vote on it later on. Is this the end of the use permit permit? There seems to be that piecemealing the uh situation. We're asking, uh, this public hearing is asking for permission to increase fees and also increase the number of vendors. So this is the, but have we established that they've met all the the needs for their use permit to be approved?
Christopher.
Uh, so we're looking at two separate tracks. One is this fee increase, which goes to city council. Other is completely separate and it is focused solely on El Ramatito permit, and that goes to planning commission. Um, so what we're talking about tonight is a fee increase that would affect not just El Ramatito, but any flea market. For example, other flea markets were to open. This is a general item that would affect all flea markets. Not focused on El Ramatito.
I guess I'm still confused. We have, but they don't have a bona fide use permit in place. It's still pending final approval. Uh, but we're here tonight to approve a change in fees, assuming that the use permit is going to be for us later is going to be approved. Is that right?
Councilmember Casey, I can, I can step in and answer this question. So as Christopher mentioned, it's two separate things. What was important for staff is that the council consider and approve any changes to the per vendor per day fee and establish that policy. So before you tonight is a resolution recommending that change. If the council approves this, this will then be incorporated into um future projects that are flea market projects and specifically for El Ramatito's uh conditional use permit when it goes to the planning commission. So we wanted to take it step by step and we need this taken care of by council first before we can move forward with those other things. And again, the CUP is a separate issue and it's not before the council tonight.
So this really doesn't have anything directly to do with flea. It's just, it's just changing the fees for flea markets to be operated in the city of Series.
Correct. It will apply to them specifically because their CUP.
Where did we come up with with two dollars? Is that a, a number that is, I mean, the, the one in South Modesto, you've mentioned before, you're familiar with something in San Jose. This two dollars doesn't seem like just a heck of a lot of money.
If you look at inflation from nineteen ninety-four to twenty twenty, uh, one dollar in nineteen ninety over two dollars in, so it's basically keeping up with inflation.
Sure, but the one dollar back in nineteen ninety-three or nineteen seventy-four, whenever that was, that was just an arbitrary number that came up. And I'm, I'm just wondering, uh, that is in place, uh, business license. Does it also, is it also, does it make the uh the vendors that happen to sell food exempt from the county approving them of selling food? It, does it exempt them from, all it, all we're doing is exempting the vendors from having to have the city license. That's all.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any additional questions or comments? Well, actually, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Martinez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to comment before, uh, Mr. Casey brought it up that it was right here in the staff report that Christopher had written. It says, according to United States Labor Department Bureau of Labor and Statistics, a dollar in nineteen ninety-four is the equivalent to approximately two dollars and seven cents in twenty twenty-three. Uh, it sounds like um, the city staff recommends the two dollars and is willing to work with that and Mr. Gomez is client. Uh, the flea market, El Ramatito is okay with that. So uh with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash next in line, approving the increase of the per day per vendor fee at the flea market.
I had Rosalinda press her button, so we hold the motion. Rosalinda?
It's a fairly quick question. Um, just want to confirm our current annual business licenses for businesses even not at the flea market is sixty dollars a year, correct?
I believe when you first apply for a business license, uh, for front-of-the-mill business, it's sixty-four dollars for the application fee. After that, there's a smaller amount that's paid. I don't remember the exact amount, but quarterly amount that's paid as a minimum.
Okay, I just want to, I, I know my mail tax is thirty dollars minimum quarterly and then sixty dollars annually. And I think there's a certain, some kind of miscellaneous fee, which is probably why it's sixty-four. But that's why I want to check because the two dollars times fifty-two weekends, I guess, if they do it once a weekend is still more than the sixty-dollar, sixty-four dollar fee are about the same, relatively close.
Okay, okay, Casey, I, I know that you pressed your buttons. I'm going to respectfully give it to you.
Sure, follow-up question. Um, this is personal experience. I, I recently had to uh change my uh, uh, quarterly taxation tax. And and part of that requirement was I had to have a city license reference. So these people, we're giving them the exemption from a city license, so at the same time, are we exempting them from getting the other state documents that are required?
No, uh, there are other requirements. Uh, anyone, and this may come up later in the meeting when we have this other item. Anyone that has, that sells um anything within a twelve-month period, uh, three different days or more has to have a seller's permit. So this does not, the action tonight does not exempt flea market vendors from seller's permit.
Okay, so the follow-up, I guess we go to our interim police chief. Code enforcement verify that, first of all, do we get a list of the hundred or five hundred or twenty-seven vendors? Do we know who they are? And then does the code enforcement verify that they have the other proper licenses to operate within the city of Series?
If you don't mind me just jumping in real quick, the state of California regulates those permits at the city of Series and the code enforcement would not take any action in, in, in imposing on the flea market as they have their business license to operate their business. And those are other businesses that are coming to them.
Is that right?
Any additional questions? I believe there was a motion on the floor.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
I.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
And just to respect everybody, for about five minutes, let's take a quick little recess in case you want to use the restroom. These other items will take a little bit longer. Thank you. Five-minute recess starts now.
Yes, we like to pull this item, it's not been uh put on the agenda properly, and so we're gonna be pulling that item and we'll bring it back on February twelfth.
Okay, and with that being said, do you still want uh home to go ahead and boot forward and explain the item?
We will, since we're continuing the item, we won't be presenting on it, but we still are required to open it up for public.
Which I will do so, yes, okay. With that being said, this uh public period hearing is is now open, is there anyone in the chambers that would like a comment on this item? Seeing none, was there any emails? Okay, and is there any comments by council? This is number fourteen, sir, number fourteen. No comments by the city council? Uh this public hearing is now closed and like as stated, we will go ahead and move this item to a further city council meeting. Okay, moving on to item number fifteen. Item number fifteen is the item where council member Casey wants to recuse himself.
Correct.
So, Mr. Casey, if uh go ahead and make your, you're just gonna go, okay? Mr. Casey will get a hold of you once we are done.
And Mayor, for the for the record, uh it's my understanding council member Casey is recusing himself in the abundance of caution because um not the applicant or the appallant, but a company I think that's going into one of the 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 parcels is a client of his company.
Okay.
It was based off of that that he is um voluntarily recusing himself.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, moving on. Consider an appeal of the planning commission's approval of conditional use permit application number twenty-three eighteen C U P. Um Ajmir Singh Randwa and Brian Rosenberg located at twelve hundred East Whitmore Avenue. Series A P N zero eighty-six dash zero sixteen dash zero seventy-seven and Christopher, go ahead and uh present the staff report, please.
Uh senior planner Teddy Hernandez will give the presentation.
Thank you, Teddy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. This presentation is for the appeal of twenty-three dash eighteen conditional use permit of the Whitmore and Morgan. Twenty-three eighteen conditional use permit is to develop a four thousand square foot car wash with eighteen vacuum stalls to be developed on a zero point eight one acre parcel and a forty-five hundred square foot gas station with convenience store, sixteen fuel pumps and seventeen electric vehicle charging stations to be developed on an zero point nine five acre parcel. The project site is located on the south side of East Whitmore Avenue, about five hundred feet west of Morgan Road. This is the aerial vicinity map showing the project area. Project site is zoned community, Plan Community Forty-eight. Project site has a general plan designation of community commercial. Properties on the north side of Whitmore are City of Modesto with an existing G three warehouse. The property to the south is low density residential, to the east is a Flyers gas station and McDonald's. And to the west is vacant office zone property, and you can see that to the west, further west of the office zone properties is um a recently approved Dutch Brothers and an O'Reilly Auto Parts store that will be going in soon. The site plan shows the proposal development to parcel one and parcel two in two phases. Phase one consists of the car wash, which is four thousand square feet with eighteen vacuum stalls. And phase two consists uh will be the development on parcel two and consists of the forty-five hundred square foot gas station with convenience stores, sixteen fuel pumps and seventeen electrical vehicle charging stations. There will be a new driveway between the proposed car wash and gas station and will have reciprocal access with the newly created parcels and existing gas station and McDonald's. There's no proposed development on the southern parcels as of yet. The top photo shows the property from Whitmore Avenue. The bottom photo shows the property from Morgan Road. On August tenth, twenty twenty-three, the property owner and applicant submitted a conditional use permit application number twenty-three dash eighteen to establish a four thousand square foot car wash with eighteen vacuum stalls and forty-five hundred square foot gas station with a convenience store, sixteen fuel pumps and seventeen electric charging vehicle stations. On August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the planning division of City of Series Community Development Department deemed the application for the conditional use permit number twenty-three eighteen complete for processing. The project was then referred to local and state agencies on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. On November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, a public notice excuse me, a hearing, a public notice hearing was posted to the city's courier pursuant to our Muni code and a physical copy of the notice was mailed to surrounding property owners within a three hundred foot radius. On December first, twenty twenty-three and December fourth, twenty twenty-three, the planning commission agenda was posted in front of the city council located at twenty-seven zero one four Street Series pursuant to government code five four nine five four point two. On December fourth, twenty twenty-three, during the planning commission public hearing, conditional use permit number twenty-three dash eighteen was presented and approved with a five zero vote with the conditions approval contained in the resolution number P C twenty-three dash twenty-six. On December fifth, twenty twenty-three, an appeal was filed by Mr. Gill, a property owner of twelve forty East Whitmore Avenue. The appeal letter provided by Mr. Gill states that in November twenty twenty-one, he submitted an application to the series planning division to construct a car wash in the same parcel as conditional use permit twenty-three eighteen, and his application was denied. Mr. Gill provided supporting documentation that consists of a copy of the series Muni code, chapter fifteen, um C one neighborhood commercial zone and chapter sixteen C two community commercial zone. With the highlighted sections according to Mr. Gill, an individual working at the planning division counter provided these copies of the Muni code and stated only the highlighted uses will be allowed on the subject property. But he does not note the name of the individual who provided these printouts. Permission statement of care, citizens advocate responsible entity was also submitted with signatures of residents of Series Turlock, Modesto, Denair, Atwater, Manteca and various other locations. The planning division does not have any record of an application submitted to develop the property located at twelve hundred East Whitmore Avenue A P N zero eight six dash zero one six dash zero seven seven between November twenty-first and the submission of the conditional use permit number twenty-three dash eighteen. The planning commission determined that the automatic car wash and automobile service station meet the required findings for approval. The planning commission's findings in favor of the conditional use permit based on the staff, the recommended of recommendation of staff. The proposal is consistent with the purpose and intent of the community commercial land use designation, the City of Series general plan. The proposal is consistent with the proposal is consistent with the purpose and intent of the P C forty-eight one community forty zoning designation as defined in the City of Series Muni code. With the conditions of approval imposed on this project, the proposed use will have no adverse effect on surrounding properties or any wildlife or habit habitat. The conditions stated in the decision are deemed necessary to protect the public health, safety and general welfare. The proposal development, proposal develops a parcel that is underdeveloped and is considered infill when surrounded by existing commercial and residential uses. The project is consistent with Series general plan policies. Options for city council. Option one, if the city council decides to deny the appeal, it would uphold the planning commission decision to approve the project, which includes order the filing of a notice of exemption, the required findings are made and approve conditional use permit application twenty-three dash eighteen subject to the conditions and approvals contained in resolution number P C twenty-three dash twenty-six. Option two, if the city council decides to approve the appeal, it would deny the approval of the project, which includes the following, a notice of exemption will not be filed. At least one of the required findings cannot be made and deny the conditional use permit application twenty-three dash eighteen. Option three, the council has the option of continuing the appeal hearing with directions to staff to research any additional questions or information sought by the council. This concludes staff presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. If I could please have the developer, if the representative representatives from the developer, is he or she here? If you can please step up first.
Good evening, everyone, uh my name is Ajmir Randawa. Uh I'm the property owner, um I would like to thank everyone here tonight for their valuable time. I'll keep it short as all the details and timelines uh we saw are posted in the agenda. From my team, um I have um the architect here, Brian. Uh civil and landscape uh engineers can make here tonight. I have my family member Jitinder, who supported me in this, my dad, Sylvender. Myself, we all worked almost two years tirelessly on this project. This went through a series of steps, followed proper procedures, guidelines and is consistent with C zoning code and general plan. Car wash and gas stations with C store is allowed usage in designated C two zoning. This project was legally pursued and was unanimously approved by C D City Planning Commission. Um I would like to request council members to please let us move forward on this project as this approval went through proper channel and is in compliance with all the codes and conditions. Um that's all I want to say, other than that, if anyone have any questions, me and my team are more than happy to answer, thank you.
Thank you very much. And if I could have the applicant of the appeal, please step up next.
Good evening, my name is Hardip Gill. Back in November thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, we made an offer on that property to buy the property. When my dad came into the city, he wasn't even given a chance for initial study or anything. Immediately, he was turned down at the desk and I have these documents from that city member who gave my dad. He told him he could not build a car wash, they would never allow it. Nor would they ever allow another retail store. On the documents, it does state retail stores and that was not highlighted. Has anyone up here seen the documents? Can I hand them forward?
Uh please hand those documents forward, I believe that have you, did you hand them to us to the previous meeting?
I did, but I'm not sure if anyone's seen them yet or not.
Believe they're in the packet.
Yeah, it should be in our packet.
In the packet.
Okay.
Should be in the agenda packet, just in case. Wanted to make sure that they were the same documents that were submitted last.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, here you go, that's our copy. Also, I have the docu sign here.
I have the city clerk, take a look at it, make sure they're the same documents. Okay, it has been confirmed, it's all part of the, yeah, they are the same ones, okay, continue.
Also, I have the docu sign here, which our real estate agent found for the offer on the property, if I can turn this in as well.
I believe that's in there too as well, right?
No, I did not turn these in last.
Oh, you did not turn that in, go ahead.
You just found these.
Martinez, I was actually going to hold on the questions to them too when we come back. But go ahead, continue, we can get those copies over here to us.
Okay.
Is it just one? Same copies, just one copy or multiple copies?
Just one copy, that's for you guys.
Just pass them down and and then we'll take a look at them as you, go ahead and finish your statement.
Okay, also, we have five gas stations within a mile from us, right? If you count the car lock on Farm Supply, that's six area. You count Magic Mart, that's six convenience stores in the area. This city denied us from building the car wash that it has unanimous unanimously approved. Also told us another retail store would never be allowed, which hindered our decision to not buy the property because we were not going to be allowed to build anything we wanted to build. Also, if I have right here from the municipal code, City of Series, Municipal Code eighteen point two eight zero nine zero. When considering a conditional use permit application under this title to permit an automobile service station, the following criteria may be taken into consideration. And then it's number two. All automobile service stations shall be limited to intersections of major thoroughfare or greater as designated by the general plan. They're not at the intersection, we are, they're not building across that either corner. They're building next to us in empty plotted land that we were denied doing the same thing. So please take this into consideration when making your decision that you guys didn't allow us to do this, I don't understand what's changed. Uh Mr. Home told my real estate agent that none of the zonings changed, so what changed in the past two years? We were not allowed to do this, we were that this would never be allowed, it's it's been years, it's already happened. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have some cards here from members of the public. And we'll go through these first and then I'll go back to whomever didn't provide a card. This is uh Admir Radoan, Radoana, well, was that you, sir? My apologies. Okay. And then I have uh Brian. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members, uh Brian Rosenberg, I am architect on the project. Mr. Home, oh excuse me, um Ms. Hernandez clearly laid out the project and explained the applicant's direction, want to go want to do with the project. So if you have any questions regarding the technical issues on it, I'd like to answer your question.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe this is uh you said your brother, is it Gendir? Please, if you step up to the podium.
Hello, uh good evening, uh mayor, council member, city staff and fellow citizens. I I represent uh for uh the development of uh this particular project as it was stated in the report and as said by Brian and Ajmir, like we went through a thorough process, this is back and forth conversations between the city uh planner, several iterations change, changing of design and that's where we finally came to. If there are any particular questions, any objective questions that council or city uh member want to know, we will be more than happy to answer that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person is Elizabeth.
Evening, my my name is Elizabeth Velazquez Williams and I'm a homeowner in the neighborhood beyond the proposed truck stop. Uh we currently have three more than adequate uh gas stations within one mile from my home, Lake Drive, and we have many more in the city of Series. Uh historically, truck stops have contributed to adverse effects on the community, including increased noise levels, um cre- increased violent crimes and higher levels of traffic. With that come many other factors that the City of Series must consider, like increased infrastructure costs, public safety need and financial harm to longstanding businesses in the area. Because of these factors, I strongly oppose a new truck stop in the area.
Thank you very much. Now I'll take it to any other persons that are in the public who would like to step up, make a comment, this would be the opportunity to do so. Is there anybody else? And please step up to the podium, state your name.
My name is Mike Flor, uh Poly Pump Company. I've been in Series for uh my whole life, Series High School. And um I fix their gas stations deep and and Gale and stuff and I've known them real good. They are a plus the community. Um I feel there's too many gas stations on that one street. And um but this would be, it would be uh bad to the community, bad for the business there because it's just too many gas stations. I think if something else was built there besides the gas station, it would be better for the community. So I just want to uh to prove the uh their instruction.
Thank you very much, next person?
Evening, my name is Andy Sanchez, I'm also resident here in Series. Also a personal friend uh Gil. I'd also want to say that I I really don't think that just because you can't have another gas station in Series, you should and like there's enough of that. I also see other kind of businesses going to the area. Uh although I'm for city growth and for yeah, I mean positive business in the area, you should also use common sense when approving certain types of businesses. You guys just approved two others. That you really don't. Alright.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Harley Brock. I work for the Gill family, uh you're not gonna find a much finer family anywhere. I'm opposed to that because it doesn't really make much sense on several fronts. Number one, they're going to be going to electric cars, thank you to our governor. There's already several gas stations in the area. But to me, it makes as much sense as it does to build another community center, a block enough up beside the Whitmore mansion, we don't need it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone, my name is Amruti Singh Malik. Just wanted to state a few things to to everyone here. Um basically, um I'm a firm believer that everyone can and does make mistakes. Being planning might have done of that and today is their time to make it right. Logically, I still don't understand the reasoning they had proposed yes to this. I think last time we were here, somebody mentioned um City of Series, um like I said, like Andy said, we're all here for growth, but that side of Series needs a supermarket more than a gas station. We need food for the kids there. Secondly, um if if everyone's here for the city, my question to everyone here, why do we not have a target? Is it because Walmart said no? If that's the case, we're we're Walmart, we were here first, we're saying no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Good evening, city council. Uh my name is Cody Clark, I am a good friend of Gill and this logically doesn't make sense to have a gas station put up there twenty feet next to a gas station. It's like saying, there's already a McDonald's on the corner, let's build another McDonald's. Logic in that doesn't make sense. Need to think about this logically, I'm all for the growth of the City of Series, I live in cities, in Series, I work in Series. For it, it's an ice, it's just a dirt lot right now. We need to have it developed, but we need to do this strategically, smartly and use common sense. It's just common sense, but in another gas station next to another gas station, doesn't make sense. So I ask you, please think about this wisely, make the right decision, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Is there anybody else? Seeing none, was there any emails? Wait a second, I just, it looks like Mr. Warren.
You're Mr. Mayor, John Warren, City of Series. If I remember, I was the only citizen at that planning mission meeting that asked the commissioners to consider voting no for this particular project. I didn't understand why the owners of the Flyer gas station are not there present making a similar bid to the commissioners. And in reading the timeline, it appeared that the public notice was placed in the Series Courier, which is only a weekly publication. It's not a monthly, or pardon me, it's only a weekly, it's not a monthly or uh everyday publication. So if a person was going to see that and know what was coming up on the calendar, they might not, if they don't take that particular uh paper. And uh also, the noticed citizen that lived nearby was mailed on November twenty-second, which I believe is the day before Thanksgiving. So how long mail would take during the holiday season to reach the people it was intended to, to inform them about this project, might have been delayed. So I think quite possibly, the uh property owners there of the Flyer, Gill family may not have received proper notification that the public hearing and the presentation was going to be made by the planning commission. Well, I think maybe taking these things into consideration when you make your decision tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Hi, my name is Gurdeep, uh I just got a couple of words I want to say. First of all, I I don't understand, the governor of California is telling us in fifteen years' time, we are only going to be no uh all electrical cars. Why the hell are we building gas stations? Can somebody here tell me? Anybody? Nobody. So tell me the reason, why are you letting people open gas stations? Where are the monies coming from? I have ten million and nine million, I wish I had that money. You know, I don't understand, can anybody explain me what's going on? I've been living in City of Series for twenty-three years, I've seen everything. But now I don't know what kind of people work for City of Series, they're not taking any opinion from the public and you know, they just all think about money, or we can make more money. And we all paying every quarter some of our gross income from the City of Series to you guys. I don't know if you know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hardip Gill again, is that okay?
Yes, sure, go ahead.
Alright, so to go back on what Mr. Warren said, we didn't receive this notice till December fifth. Everything got approved December fourth. Also, if you guys don't mind me asking, who notified them, uh the opposing side of the appeal?
As in how were they notified?
How were they notified that the appeal was tonight? Who can answer that question?
I think Teddy can answer that question.
We do our public noticing in the Ser- Series Courier as well and we send out a letter to all the residents in the area and the opposition is notified of the movement of the project since they submitted their their appeal.
So, can I reply? So we're the ones appealing, why didn't none of you guys reach out to us and tell me the appeal date? Why did I have to call in on December seventh, when there was a meeting on December eighth? To ask, I believe I spoke to Teddy, when the appeal was, right, and you told me December twenty-second? And then I texted Christopher and asked him, hey, is there appeal on the twenty-second because nobody's reached out to us? If we're filing the appeal, how come nobody ever reached out to us?
So we did send a notice to your property, the the Flyers gas station, and you should have received an email from our department.
So I never received an email and I received this notice on the nineteenth, on Friday. The appeal is this Monday, what if we were out of town or had something scheduled?
We followed all the regulations that are required for the posting, sir.
I filed this appeal on December fourth, it took one month and fifteen days for me to receive the letter. Mr. Taquito, our neighbors, did not receive the letter. Also, is if the city attorney is here, I would like to, what are the requirements for the Brown Act? For public notice?
The Brown Act requires uh agenda postings, which requires a seventy-two hour notice posting for regular meetings such as this one. I believe the posting for this meeting was accomplished last week on
I believe the posting for this meeting was accomplished last week on Wednesday or Thursday. On Wednesday, so that met the 72-hour requirement. So the requirements that Ms. Hernandez referenced relate to public hearings and the mailing of the notifications. So those, from what it sounds like, they were all completed properly.
And what about the original application that went out or was dated on November 21st that we didn't receive till December 5th? About the proposed object, because none of our neighbors received that. Mr. Taquito is right next door to us, they didn't receive that.
I believe the city keeps records of when notices get sent. And so the requirement under the law is not when you actually receive it, because there could be intervening factors that are outside of the city's control. What's required is that it's actually sent and mailed off by the city. So as long as the city's got records of that, it complies with the requirement. Notwithstanding that issue, the fact if if someone didn't receive the notice of a public hearing for the original planning commission meeting, that doesn't undo the decision, it's a factor. I think it's a factor as to the council to consider because it is before the council for appeal tonight. So they can they can take that into a factor, but the notices were sent properly for both the planning commission and for the appeal tonight.
Well, for the planning commission, isn't this letter supposed to legally be sent 10 business days before the planning commission meeting? Because it was like four or five business days, literally the day before Thanksgiving.
I don't believe the code requires business days. I think it's calendar days. We'd have to double check the code. So again, the timing of it sounds, it appears that it got conflated with the holiday. So in terms, again, of when you receive it, I understand that it may have been received after the timeframe that it would have been ideal. But if it was sent by the city within those days required by the code, then the city has met its legal obligation from a noticing perspective.
Thank you.
Okay, and I know there might be some questions, but I just want to make sure. Is there anybody else besides applicant today that wants to make a comment before we close this hearing and open it up for questions from the council? Yes, sir.
Thanks for the time again. My name is Jitender. I spoke earlier. So there are general discussions that are going on, but two particular questions that have been raised by felt the citizens is how did we reach to a gas station? Like, why are we requiring a gas station? And the second is why EV? So this is 17 EV chargers as California is moving towards electric vehicle and a gas station. And we have done a report by independent company that looks at like, what is the requirement of that? And they support that in in near term and long term, there is a need for a gas station which would support certain volumes. And in addition to that, there are 17 EV stations. So there are not enough electric vehicles in cities of city of series now. So for for developers like us to put this infrastructure, you know, we need to have something that is financially viable now so that when the transition into EVs happen, you know, this is a gas station and EV charger with the convenience store. So I think it's 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 that is the reasoning why we have this, you know, like, you know, one of the gas station most number of charge stations. So that's my comment to that question. The other comment were made, why why there's not a grocery store here? So this is this site is small for big chains like Target and so on. So we have approached them. And even the smaller grocery outlet such as Food Mag's grocery outlet, and we have shared all the people we have reached out to with the planning, uh, planning department, Teddy and Chris. Nobody is interested to come at this point. They think it's not a market that would support. We want to bring a grocery chain here. We are still reaching out. That's why we have kept the back lot. We are still trying to reach out when we can share all the people we have tried. We are trying to bring a grocery to. We understand there is a need for it. So we are, you know, trying that. And this is, that's not what what we, the suggestion came from the city that they they think that there's a requirement for a grocery, you know, in that area, and we are trying to bring that in. But in the meantime, we have to move on and develop what is allowed and, you know, that that's all. I want to say if there's any particular question based on the comments, I'd be more than happy to take. If not, thank you.
Thank you very much. Once again, unless it's the applicant or the developers, anybody else on gearing towards closing this out? Now, we actually did have some emails, right? Let's go for the emails.
That is correct. The first email is from Edgar Aguilar. Consider an appeal planning commission approval of conditional use permit application number 2318. Ashmer Singh Randhawa, Brian Rosenberg, located at 1200 East Whitmore Avenue. Series A P N zero eight six zero one six zero seven seven. This public comment submitted regarding the notice of public hearing on the proposed conditional use permit approved on December 4th, 2023. The city of series should reconsider the planning commission's decision on its duty to the protection of living conditions in the adjacent already established neighborhoods, especially preserving the privacy, solar access and character of adjacent residences. The city and its planners and designers should revisit any developments so that the privacy, solar access and general livability conditions of adjacent residences are not significantly impacted. The current planned car wash needs to adhere to sound ordinances so that it is not heard and negatively impact the adjacent neighborhoods with any more noise pollution. Setbacks need to have adequate space between adjacent residential homes and proposed construction. The current six-foot retaining wall needs to be upgraded to a sound wall with a minimum of 15 feet of height on the commercial side to ensure commercial vehicles, sounds and engine exhaust pollution is not negatively impacting the adjacent residential neighborhood by the commercial needs. The taller wall will also help provide security from the types of criminals and vagrant activities that burden neighborhoods adjacent to commercial properties. The city should revisit its no idling and no commercial parking policy to ensure they are legally enforceable by our police and community officers with harsh fines and penalties to property owners, commercial companies, corporations and commercial drivers for violations that occur on these properties and through the city. As issues are already problematic along the 1200 block of Morgan Road adjacent from the new warehouses, which have seen fatal car accidents involving commercial trucks illegally parking along Morgan Road, and still commercial vehicles are seen illegally idling for hours or parked days and weeks. Would also like to see an environmental impact report done on the land as any development should not negatively impact the existing wildlife ecosystem. There are plenty of birds of prey spotted living in the areas and seen flying and hunting off this land, and it would only be right that a proper review is done. The city of series should prioritize that any new development adds the proper amount of tree canopy and green infrastructure, both for its beautification benefits and its environmental impact. Thank you for your consideration. Edgar Aguilar, 32 years city of series resident. The next email is from Heather Woodard. Hello, first I want to say thank you for taking the time to listen and hear what our neighbors are saying very loudly regarding the proposed gas station and Mr. Car Wash and Whitmore and Morgan Roads. Do not need an additional gas station in the area as there are already four in less than a four-mile radius. What we do need is an actual grocery store. I'm tired of having to constantly fight traffic and drive over the freeway to the other side of town when I run out of milk or need to pick up something real quick. I have checked my mail several times and spoke with neighbors, and we have never seen any letter in the mail, nor have we seen anything added to the water bill announcing the council's decision to allow another unneeded gas station to this area. Again, thank you for hearing my concerns, and I really hope you reconsider bringing another gas station or car wash to our area. Sincerely, a concerned resident, Heather Woodard. Next email is from Carolina Estrada. To whom it may concern, this email is regarding the disapproval of the new car wash to be located on Morgan Road and Whitmore Road. There are many reasons why approving this car wash would not be in the best interest of series. Starting with the amount of noise that the new car wash would bring to the neighboring houses. Series already has multiple gas stations all within half a mile radius. This one would be right next door to an already pre-existing location. We would benefit more from opening restaurants, fast food chains and affordable grocery stores and markets. Instead of opening up a gas station here, location should be built to give an opportunity for new businesses to start up, mom and pop restaurants, etc. This town has been evolving so much, and I would hate to be known as a town with gas stations at every corner. There's so much history and tradition here. We as a community need to make sure this remains. So please do not build this gas station. Best, Carolina. Last email is from Yedira Tovar. To whom it may concern, I'm writing this email to voice my support for the appeal of the approval of the permit to build the car wash and gas station on Morgan Road. There are various reasons this would be would not be beneficial to the residents and existing businesses, including but not limited to its close proximity to already existing and recently built gas stations and car washes in close proximity to the site. Environmental effects, including increased water usage, waste and pollution, noise pollution from machinery and increased traffic will create a nuisance. Will we even be able to have our windows open on a sunny day, or will we hear constant noise from the machines, dryers and vacuums? There are a number of residents that share my sentiments and would much rather see other uses usages of the land. We need more accessibility to fresh produce on this side of town as well as more recreational opportunities. It is my belief that the building of this car wash and gas station will negatively impact the residents and existing businesses. We should invest in things that are needed for our community instead of lining the pockets of yet another gas store owner who's probably not even part of our community and just wants to make money. I hope my sentiments will be taken under consideration at today's meeting. Thank you, warm word, Yedira Tovar, lifelong series native.
Thank you very much. Like I said earlier, now the the public hearing is now closed. So I bring this item back to council. We'll begin with discussion. And if there's any questions, then that council member is going to ask questions to the applicants and or the builders, and then we'll make we'll take action. So going back to Daniel Martinez, you had your press, you had pressed your button. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor, I
Yes, ma'am.
Quick interruption. I want of one point of clarification in speaking with staff that we want the council to be aware of. The appeal has been for the entire action that the planning commission took in December. But and staff can clarify this for me if I'm wrong. It's two components. It's a gas. It's an application for a gas station approval and the charging stations and for car wash. Under the zoning designation applicable to this site, a car wash is a permitted use. Basically, it's a use by right, and the city has the ability to regulate certain things associated with it related to the site plan, basically the aesthetics of the business. But because it's a permitted use, it's not subject to a conditional use approval with conditions, etc. What is a conditional use of the specific project is a gas station? And that is what's discretionary, and that's what the planning commission considered and issued findings associated with the use and conditions of approval. That's the component of the project that's before the council today for consideration. So notwithstanding that, the the car wash is a permitted use and isn't really necessarily subject to appeal. It's the gas station, and that's really what we're here asking the council to make a decision on.
Thank you for the clarification.
Just to clarify, it's the gas station and the charging stations in one? I had a question for the applicant, Mr. Gill. You were able to find those documents and bring them forward to us. Were you able to figure out or was your father able to remember who he had spoken to at the city that had denied his initial request to develop that lot?
Yeah, we've known for quite some time now. We were waiting till the appeal to come forward. It was Christopher Home. He's the one who gave me my dad those documents.
Okay. So I I went to that area this past weekend. I used to work over off of Morgan at California Landscape for a while, like 2020, 2019. There's the American Gas Station. There's the new AMPM. There's the Quick Stop. There's your guys' Flyers and a 7-Eleven that was just recently built on Blaker. I believe that there's already enough gas stations in that location. Like Rose Linda said, that's her district. That area needs food, needs restaurants. It needs more than just another gas station. And then also too, just to to really hamper in on something that Mr. Casey is always talking about, it's communication. You constantly, he is up here saying that people are notified in time or that people don't find out until after the fact. Tonight, listening to this, it sounds like communication was an issue and that people weren't notified quick enough. So that's definitely something that we need to look into for those reasons. For the for the lack of food in the area and the amount of gas stations that we already have and the lack of communication, I'm going to be going with option two to approve the appeal.
Thank you. Any other? I I do have, Rose Linda, your your button is pressed. Go ahead.
Thank you, Daniel. I definitely concur with a lot of pretty much everything you said. I have been working with Julian, trying to get in some grocery stores. Please know that is on my list. I live and represent that district. Few little things that, just looking at this map, at the site map, which was page seven of your presentation, Teddy, which you did a great job. But if I'm looking at it, it looks like the gas station actually.
Seven.
Seven, there we go. It, from what I'm looking at this, it looks like it actually blocks the entrance into the designated office or retail space that's designated next to it or adjacent to it. If I'm looking at this correctly, there is no way of accessing the proposed commercial site next to our office designation.
So there will be access coming in the driveway. It will be reciprocal going into the office area. And because of that, the office area will have driveways because engineering. But it also has the driveway goes all the way back to the parcels in back where they're.
But looking off of Morgan Road, turning into the area now, and I'm assuming the hopefully grocery store sometime in the near future. We are trying really hard as well, and the developer said the same as well. Just looking straight through behind what's flyers now and the proposed and the car wash where the gas station that's proposed now, the subject of this appeal, it looks like it actually blocks the entrance, limiting fire access and other access to the proposed office space. If I'm looking at that correctly, off of Morgan.
No, that driveway will remain, and it will be remain. And then the driveway between the proposed proposed gas station, the proposed car wash will be wide enough for fire access.
And there's a route through there for regular traffic to get through safely? Don't necessarily agree with that. And then as well as following up on the ordinance that mentioned earlier by the Gill family, which is 18.28.090, if anyone does want to look up city ordinances, where it does say a max of two service stations are allowed at cross intersection with one being at a T. I do not see either one of these gas stations being at the T. So to me, that would be in violation of our own city ordinance. So I as well will be voting to support the appeal with Daniel Martinez.
When this item came to my desk, I thought about all those times that I had asked for us to have a joint meeting with the planning commission. There's two planning commissioners here. Now they're city council members. I feel that that meeting, if we would have had it earlier, they could have been, this could have been avoided. And the reason I say that is because the city council chooses those planning commissioners to represent the city of series, although everyone here needs to understand that the planning commission does make decisions on their own as an entity. And that is the balance of government that we have. But there's also a process, and that's why you had the opportunity to appeal. And with that being said, I want to avoid these kind of things in the future. And on January 29th, there will be a joint city council and planning commission meeting to talk about the vision of the city of series as a whole. I've I've read all the comments online about there being too many gas stations. I understand that a gas station across the street from another gas station, in my personal opinion, that's not something that I would consider too many gas stations. The side of council member on her district, there is a lack of grocery stores. And that's where my mother lives as well. But I do believe that that for us to to be okay with allowing another gas station next to your gas station is not a part of the vision of the city of series. So with that being said, I agree with my colleagues. Council Vice Mayor, Bressilera?
Yeah, so this is probably not going to go over well with a lot of you, but I want you to understand where I'm coming from. Four years ago, I was appointed to the planning commission, and I made a decision that I would only make decisions for series using the facts, figures, and the information that was provided, not using feelings. And I've stayed remained steadfast in that for four years now, a year on the planning commission and three years on the city council. So if I look at this project and we're here to decide if we're going to accept this appeal or not, I am looking at this project as a project by a developer that's consistent with the general plan, consistent with the current zone designation, no adverse effect on surrounding properties, which you all disagree, obviously. Conditions stated to protect the public health. Conditions stated to protect the public health, safety and general welfare and develops undeveloped property, which considered, this is considered infill. And is consistent with the general plan policies. It's obvious I'm probably going to vote against this appeal. And they're going to vote for it. What I would like for you to, to see happen in that situation, what's likely going to happen. I hope the developer is steadfast to at least put the car wash there. It's pretty obvious the gas station's the, the ticking point in this project. Hopefully the developer will continue to put a car wash there. We have a lot of car washes in Series, but we don't want to have one on the west side. So it's pretty obvious you, you know already how I'm going to vote to. I'm going to vote against this appeal, but I wanted you to know why and I want you to know the background on why. What I told the people when I was going to be elected that I would do and I've remained steadfast to that. Every single meeting, every single vote for four years. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, thank you very much for always being upfront and honest. Um, uh, what I would say is that I, we can go back, we can come back for a motion, but Mr. Martinez and Rose Linda, we're talking about no gas station, but we are okay with the car wash?
Yes, absolutely.
The sentiment that we're looking at?
It's inconsistent and.
Okay.
Yeah, my understanding is it's not even an item we're discussing tonight, correct? It's, okay.
Mr. Car Wash now, when I go, when I do travel to the, the side of town, I also live on the west side of Series, so I am living in that area. I understand I drive by there every single day. So I do know, I do have to make an effort to come to the side of town to go to car wash. I do see the long lines into the road um to get into the Mr. Car Wash now. So I would be supportive, especially since it is an undeniable right um of use to go in.
Can I, can I make just one final comment? Uh, this is to the developer. If the shoe was on the other foot, we would have done the same thing for you. So I hope that you don't take this personal. It's just the right, the right decision now for the city of Series. Respectfully, thank you.
Making a, uh, motion to approve the appeal, denying the planning commission's approval.
For the gas station.
For the gas station.
I'll second that.
I get a roll call, please.
Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. So just to give you a little more procedure on what's going to happen. What we're looking for tonight is direction on the general sense where the council wants to go to either approve the appeal or deny the appeal. In approving the appeal and denying the project, we need to draft findings associated with your denial of the project, similar to what the planning commission did in approving it. So we're going to, we need to walk through these reasons so that we can line it up um with with the requirements.
Absolutely.
If we, if we can maybe.
Reasoning behind my no vote. Absolutely. So like I, I stated, I drove that area. There's already uh five or six gas stations, quite a few convenience stores. There's not a lot of food eateries outside of Mr. Takedo and McDonald's. The west side needs more than just an additional gas station. So that was one reason for me. The second was the lack of communication to surrounding businesses and homeowners in the area. Uh, that weren't able to get that information to get out to that pl- uh planning commission meeting in adequate time. Those are my reasons behind no.
Let me know when you're ready. Nubia.
Okay, so. So, um, in here, at what, when a general concern with surrounding land uses and um it'd be a proliferation.
Failure to communicate and also Rose Linda cited the ordinance?
The ordinance that was cited by Councilmember Vera um is, I think it provides a policy framework because it says that these are factors that may be considered. They don't have to be, but it is something that can be used as part of your ground, the, the grounds for this specific action.
Thank you.
We can use that as well as part of the.
Perfect.
Part of this.
The lack of, uh, the failure to communicate. Referencing the order, uh, I mean, excuse me.
I would stay maybe more away from the, the lack of communication because technically the notices were done properly. I can understand that that's a reason why the council um may, may want to focus on, but I think for what we need to do is draft something for you to approve for finality.
An adverse effect on the surrounding properties.
Yeah. That's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
That's something that I think we can incorporate into final.
That sounds like.
Then, yeah, then my, my reasons behind it would be an adverse effect on the surrounding properties.
Well, you have three reasons there.
Is that the access to the proposed uh office space or eventually I'm assuming it's going to be a commercial strip mall um next to where this currently outlined in, outlined in the plan. Cause to me, the proposed gas station now where it's located, the actual convenience store of it, looks like it's in the exact drive line, like I said, page seven. Drive line into the commercial setting into where the buildings are going to be built. But to me, I just don't see how a, a ladder truck is going to get through there safely.
So we'll, we'll look into that to see if we can incorporate it as part of the, the findings. But I think that we have what we need for direction to bring something back. So again, procedurally, what we'll do is bring a resolution. Um, a formal resolution for you to approve and based off of what I've heard, you, you'll take a formal vote on it.
Absolutely.
But it will be to approve the appeal and deny the gas station portion of the project. It will include references to the findings that are required under the code.
So is that clear that we will motion today? And then we'll vote and then needs to come back in a resolution at another city council meeting to be voted upon again with the information that you're going to gather.
Correct. And again, the idea is that this will conclude the public hearing for this.
Correct.
And it will not be, there will not be a new notice sent out for that. Um, but just so that the public is aware, we'll be bringing this back for you to prove. But this will, this meeting concludes the public hearing for this particular item and you will formally approve uh the document at a future meeting.
Okay.
Likely your next meeting.
Sounds good. Martinez, can you repeat the motion?
Do you want me to repeat it as is option two or did you want me to word it in a specific way for you?
I think I, what you, my recommendation would be to make the motion to approve option two with the reasons stated and I have the reasons stated.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve option two, the appeal, denying the planning commission's approval with the conditions stated.
And I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey recused. Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
I'm.
Uh, Vice Mayor Silveira?
No.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries three, one no and one recusal.
Thank you very much, everyone. There is no new business and now we will move on to a discussion item, which is item number sixteen. Considering the citywide garage sale. Christopher Home?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We're missing a council member.
Before you speak, can we bring in Mr. Casey? My apologies. Okay, okay, Mr. Casey, bring him in.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, everyone. Mr. Councilmember Casey, welcome back. We are now on item sixteen. This is for the citywide garage sale and this goes to Christopher.
Good evening. This topic was brought up at a previous city council meeting. That's why we're here tonight. Staff is recommending overall, the city council discussed some options for organizing a citywide garage sale event. Series municipal code describes the regulations that apply to garage sales in the city. And a California seller's permit is required whenever a person makes three or more sales within a twelve month period. When a person holds a seller's permit, they must file sales and use tax returns, pay any sales. But whether a person holds their own individual garage sale or participates in a citywide garage sale event. Each day is counted for the purposes of the municipal code and California laws. Therefore, if a resident holds two personal garage sales within a twelve month period, you can imagine. And then um they want to participate in the citywide garage sale event, they would need to obtain a California seller's permit in order to participate in a citywide event. Technically, um municipal code also requires a use permit. But organizing a citywide garage sale event could involve two options. Um, number one, the city could require all participants to obtain a garage sale permit per the typical process and the five dollar fee. And um suggestion would be that the marketing materials for the probably explicitly state that a garage sale permit is required. Enforcement of these permits may require additional focus by enforcement. Option number two would be that the city could waive the requirement for every person that wants to participate in this event to get a garage, to obtain a garage sale permit uh from the city and we would waive the five dollar fee as well. Um, however, if we did that, uh, suggestion would be that marketing materials and flyers for this event probably state that a California seller's permit may be required if the participant already held two personal garage sales with prior twelve month period. Basically, we should discourage people from having that third sale within run into problems. For people that haven't had that many garage sales and they want to participate, this could be a good event. So that's why we're talking about it and we wanted to um show these options to the city council and get your feedback. Thank you.
Christopher, a quick question. What does the code say currently about obtaining, about uh having a yard sale? And could you answer that question? Can you, does it, I know it's in the report. Could you just read out the little, little one portion of it?
So the attachment A in um packet has a few pages, uh talks about the duration of the sale, um the application process, the issuance of permits. So I can answer any specific questions you have.
So for example, when we talk about permits, everyone's required to have a permit for a yard sale. I mean, that's a given, right?
Yes.
Uh, but what you're saying is that you're, you're saying that per the state of California, you need to obtain a seller's permit after two yard sales.
Yes.
So, so and I, I want to kind of maybe reference Newby because I could be wrong about this. So if you obtain a seller's permit and say for example, you make under five hundred dollars, does that still mean that you need a seller's permit? Because there's, there's that threshold.
There might be, there might be a threshold for reporting.
Reporting, correct.
But again, I think the idea is that technically the state requires that if you sell anything and it sounds like it's three or more days in a calendar year is what triggers it.
So it's more of a, more of a days.
It's more, I think so. And I think the idea behind this is that if you waive this requirement because it's, you know, a limited duration event, if it's a one time, once a year issue, then it wouldn't trigger that anyway.
Seller permit, seller's permit is what roughly what? I think thirty to sixty, I could be wrong.
I don't, I don't know how much it costs.
I could be wrong. I could be wrong. I, I need to fact check that. Casey, would you know what a seller permit, how much it costs for seller permit? Is it fifty? Fifty bucks for a seller's permit? Okay, so if you, you consider fifty bucks for a seller's permit and the city of Series charges you five dollars. Is that what we do? We charge five dollars every time that uh you have a yard sale? And then you were saying, so, so it, so there'd be some app, some people who participate who may not need a seller's permit if they only participate once.
Mayor, according to the California Service Tax Center official website, there is no charge for a seller's permit. Some security deposits are required, sometimes required, but it sounds like it's, what's triggered more is the reporting and how much you actually.
Right, okay. What, what the reason why I'm asking these questions is because I want to encourage the citizens of Series to participate in something like this, to encourage folks to understand what it really takes to, to have a garage sale. And I know that we live in a, in a time where sometimes a person is, they're having a garage sale because they need a little cash on the side or they're just trying to get rid of a couple of different things. Um, so as long as we have all this information in that pamphlet that you're referring to. And you, we could, this could be a huge cost savings if we don't actually print anything. This could be all digital. I think that might be a good option. Let's just take that in consideration. And e- even if we do charge five dollars and everybody participates and you have, you know, a hundred people out of the forty plus thousand people that live in the city of Series, you could have a little bit of some funding that goes back to you know, the time that it took to put this flyer together as an incentive. So those, those are the only comments and questions that I have. Anybody else? Actually, yes, I have three buttons pressed. I don't know who pressed their buttons first, but I'll, I'll go, actually I'll go right to left. So Rose Linda?
I guess I just want clarification because I thought the current allows you five dollars for a weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So technically you're already hitting that with the first permit. Is that correct?
Possible that our municipal code may need um needed a little bit to says in state law.
Is that your only question? Oh, wow. Okay. Vice Mayor, your rep, sir.
My only question would be, can you find out please if we, the city or municipality has the ability to spend all licenses and permits for one day? Eight hours, everything and say, everybody on August, whatever, you can have a good yard sale and you don't have to worry about any permits, any fees, anything from state, federal or local government. I think that's the key question here.
So I asked that exact question uh to the California Department of Tax and and then they said that we not have that authority and that we still have to, citizens still have to abide by their rules.
Okay, my second question would be, could you, did you ask them in this way? Could they then the state say, yes, you, Series can suspend our license or our permit for a day? Did you ask them that way? If you haven't, can you please? Thank you. It's all in the delivery.
It's not a bad question.
We don't want anybody to pay anything. We want seven thousand yard sales. Seriously, that's, that's the nuts and bolts of it. And if they can get away with one day where they don't have to go here, go there and sign up or pay any fees, I'm all for it.
Okay. And I know, Rose Linda, you pressed your button again, but Mr. Martinez, you have some questions?
Actually, no, the Vice Mayor and you both uh asked my questions, communication and, and waiving those fees. Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay. Rose Linda, you have follow up question?
Yes, and then um I guess my next question would be, how are the neighboring cities around us, including Houston, Turlock and Modesto, be able to do this? Um, and you're implying that we're not able to.
Your question, whether the, sorry, could you repeat your question?
How is Houston, Modesto, Turlock and other surrounding cities around us able to do one of these community yard sales? Where you're almost implying that we're not able to. So I'm just kind of wondering how is that? How are they doing it and we're not able to? What do we need to change?
I think we're definitely able to. Uh, the, the items that I brought up in the staff report are just to help people make sure that we're, we're not en- enabling people to have yard sales more than they're supposed to per California state law. So it's more of a just being careful thing. We can definitely have the event.
But technically they can have more than two yard sales. They just need to obtain a seller's permit. So it's not that they can't. They can.
Not just a seller's permit, but they would need a, a use permit.
Yeah, even if they did. Yeah, even if they did, they, they can have it as long as they're paying, as long as they're pulling the right, the right permits and, right? Just wanted, just wanted to make sure. But is it, is it actually to her question is, have you had an opportunity to reach out to any other municipalities on how their program is ran?
Not yet, no.
No, that'd be, that'd be great. Yeah. Choose a city, whoever does a better job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional questions from the council? Uh, let's take this back to the public, which is now diminished just a little bit. Oh, this is the, is this the person who brought this idea to the council? Look at her. She's, she's the one that's going to make it all happen. Thank you very much for coming back.
Thank you all for bringing up.
See, you guys are Niner fans. You like, just like that game?
Oh, yes, I'm still recovering.
For Niners.
Yes. And you waive the six months. You say two yard sales per year, but if you have it in February, you gotta wait six months.
Is that, is that a part of the ordinance? We might have to look at it and change it maybe? Or is that state law, Doug? Yeah, that's, that might be state law. There's kind of certain things that, but we'll double, can you please double check that? I know, I feel Doug is very confident.
Yep. It's both. So it's on a rolling basis. It's not by calendar year.
Okay. Okay, that answered your question?
So, so for example, if you had, if the city had a citywide yard sale in February, and then we had another yard sale within twelve months, that's fine. But as soon as we had a third citywide yard sale before the next February, that's when we would be, I mean, it, it's almost like we're trying to skirt the California state law and enabling people to have yard sales because they might think that, oh, the city's allowing me to do it. That, that, that means I don't need a seller's permit.
Well, I would hope not, but I think she was more asking along the lines of is, does it count if you do it in the summer and then?
No, I want to have.
Then you do it in February.
During the summertime. March. Oh. When it's not creating under your. So that's just a bonus. Have two regular yard sales per year. Cause Rip, he does it all the time.
I get, I guess if, if, and I understand where you're coming from, and I understand where she's coming from, if we can just jot that information down. So that way, we come back, we actually have a definite answer. And for clarification, you wanted to have two yard sales?
I'd like to.
All right. Yeah, yeah. Well, which I was, what I was saying earlier is that you could have a third yard sale. You would just have to get your seller's permit, which is not, nothing too wild, but we don't want to limit yard sales. We just want to make sure we fall within the lines of what we needed, what is allowed and not allowed, right? To encourage people to do it. Yeah, absolutely. Does that make sense, Christopher? I know that you're, you're probably
Yeah.
receiving all of this.
Clarification, the, the citywide yard sale, if anyone participates in it, then it does count towards their meeting their threshold of three, and then they need not only a seller's permit, but also a use permit from the city.
That's what we say it doesn't. Unless we say it doesn't.
Correct, we could change.
That one day, we could say it doesn't count towards your three or whatever.
As long as it doesn't.
Anything we want like that.
We could, we could amend our code to say that, yes.
Okay, so let's take that into consideration. I think that you got consensus. It's a lovely couple over here. Niner fans are excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Is there, is there anybody else, any other members? Mr. Warren, I would love to hear what you have to say, sir. Absolutely.
John Warren, City of Series. I get my brain going here. The requirement is the number of days or the number of events. Because like Ms. Rosalinda has talked about, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that's three days. So is two garage sales could be six days. So is it a day count or is it an event count with the state requirement for the sales?
Mayor, would you like me to answer that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Um, per state law, it's per day.
So each day is a new event.
Yes.
So if I got a permit to have a weekend sale, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I would need three, five-dollar permits? Couldn't do that because you're only allowed two.
Like I mentioned, we might, we might want to amend our code to have.
So those are good suggestions, yeah, so that makes sense.
Garage sale, it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yes, yeah, they do.
You just don't have it one day.
Oh, that's true. Absolutely, yeah. So that means that we'll look into the ordinance and see how we can or cannot be flexible. And that's, that's some good points, Mr. Warren.
You know, so if you have two a year, you're having six days. You're well over the.
Right, right, right. We just need a little education too for the public. No, great question, Warren. Thank you. Is there anybody else? You have, you have a follow-up?
Yeah. Cause when I go down to get the permit, they, it's for two days. Won't give it to me for three days. So usually, my best days usually is on Saturday and Sunday. Then it's a half a day because I'm already in the house watching my ballgame.
Okay, something to consider, something to consider. Write that down, please. Thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Yes, I just noticed the addition. Did you press yours again as well or just, that's from earlier? Rosalinda, go ahead.
So just reading, since we do have the ordinance in front of us, a five-point-eighteen-point-zero-seven-zero duration of the sales, there's no yard sale or no sale permit should be issued for promoting yard sales, whatever, for more than three consecutive days or no more than two consecutive Saturdays or Sundays. So just reading that alone, it looks like our ordinance is already a violation. So does a referral need to be made by me, I guess, to update that during the referral section? Okay.
I, I, Councilmember, we are, sorry.
No, go ahead. I just want to make sure we're, it sounds like we're already allowing it to happen. So I don't understand where, where this discussion is going or originating, if we already have an ordinance in place that allows three consecutive days according to five-point-eighteen-point-zero-seven-zero.
So I think as part of this discussion, we can bring that back as an, as an overhaul with a presentation on some concrete options. And at a staff level, we'll figure out if that would require an ordinance change, so we don't necessarily need to make it a formal referral item.
So you have consensus. We would like for staff to bring back the presentation and report. Okay, we're good to go. Okay. Moving on, because I know there's, there's no emails, right? Want to make sure. Moving on, for council member referrals, are there any council members that have any referrals? Seeing, oh, you do? Go for it.
Get to that page of my notes. Um, I guess, I don't know if it's necessarily a referral, but I'm just kind of curious with the status of the grant writer. I really haven't seen any grants come forward. Um, I know we approved, I think it was what, ninety thousand dollars a year to have the grant writer, and I would just like to see whether money's being used and how it's being used. A really cool presentation would be really appreciated.
Okay. Uh, Doug, you might steal my thunder for my report. Capital. She has a question.
We'll bring back a full presentation on the grant writer.
Okay. Are you okay with that?
We'll bring back a full report on what the grant writers doing, what they're working on and everything as far as what grants are going after.
Okay. Any additional referrals? Seeing none. Moving on to reports, I do have a report myself. Rosalinda, I seen your button. It's okay, no worries. Okay, I would like to start, I have two reports. The first report is, uh, I would like to share with you the highlights of my recent trip to the United States Conference of Mayors, ninety-second winter's meeting in Washington DC, which took place last week. Our winter meeting is an annual event held in the late January, providing crucial platforms for mayors across the country to engage with the White House, the current administration, and Congress, facilitating decisions on the priorities of American cities. In addition to fostering dialogue with key federal entities, the conference conducts two leadership meetings each year, one in the fall and the other in the winter. These gatherings are designed for elected and appointed leaderships, leadership within the organization to strategize, focus on organizational priorities, interact with high-ranking officials from the current administration and Congress, and identify emerging issues. During the winter meetings, scheduled meetings were arranged by our Capitol Advocacy Partners, which is our grant writers, with Congressman Duarte, Senator Pedia, Senator Butler, and the Department of Transportation. The purpose of these discussions was to advocate for top priority issues such as transportation infrastructure, the Diamond Interchange Bridge on Service Road, the VFW Hall, public safety initiatives, housing, and the ongoing efforts to reduce homelessness in the city of Series. I ensure that our community voices was heard during these meetings, particularly emphasizing the dire need to support underserved neighborhoods requiring sidewalks. And I am pleased to report that these conversations are progressing and Capitol Advocacy Partners will be applying for grants to address our community-specific needs. And I personally commit to ensuring that our unique story continues to resonate in the halls of Washington DC. It is important to note that this, this trip falls within the fiscal year budget, and I welcome any questions or discussions regarding this matter. Myself and my office are at your disposal for any clarification or additional information. And thank you for the ongoing support. I look forward to collectively advocating the interest of the city. My second report from Stanislaus Council of Government. I wanted to provide you with an update of an upcoming event related to the Stanislaus Council of Government. This week marks a significant occasion at the California Transportation Commission. We'll be conducting a regular scheduled meeting in the City of Modesto's chambers throughout the week. As the Chair of STANCOG, I am honored to play a pivotal role during these sessions, engaging with esteemed colleagues and addressing crucial matters, matters related to the transportation and regional needs. Additionally, I'm excited to announce that I will be hosting this year's reception, representing Stanislaus County and the nine cities on Thursday at the Doubletree. This event presents an excellent opportunity to foster collaboration, exchange ideas, and strengthen the ties between our communities and regional partners. The reception serves as a platform to discuss crucial issues, share insight, and collectively work towards the betterment of our region. And that is my report. Rosalinda?
All right, so going over just economics, I've met with several business owners. I know today Julian, as well as Doug, met with a couple of businesses to go over their concerns. Um, I'm happy to work with any businesses as well as set up appointments with Julian. I know I'm putting him on the spot right now, but we've had this discussion um, about what opportunities Series can do for the local businesses here and support. I know the economy is changing. As a small business myself, I am feeling the change and slowing in the business, so I do understand the need for helping our businesses. And today, Julian, as well as our Vice President of the Series Chamber, met with a small business minority down in San Fran, down in Fresno today um, via Zoom about some opportunities, free opportunities and trainings available for our local businesses and what we can do here in Series to continue working on supporting them and through what seems to be a slightly slowing of our economy. Um, I am also working again with Opportunities Stanislaus, and I know Julian has a few connections. He's also working on regarding trying to bring some kind of grocery store to my side of town. Um, as for housing, I'm working with a couple of developers, met with a developer last week regarding the West Landing and some possibilities out there, as well as bringing in several hundred homes into a subdivision out there. Um, also spoke with two possible developers that are interested in transitional housing in Series, but that is a very slow process. It's taking a lot longer than I realized, and I appreciate Christopher to responding to, I think it was about ten emails today from one of them. Um, they had a lot of questions about the entire process that I am very limited when it comes to my experience in that area. Um, as for homeless, I know we have the pit count coming up. We didn't have an SHA meeting this month, so we don't have anything to report out on that. Um, as for the San Joaquin air pollution, we do have an upcoming meeting. I noticed the slate of um, people that were supposed to be voting on was not on the agenda. So I'm just going to go ahead and vote and make my best decision. Um, for the city of Series, it looks like they were running uncontested, so it probably isn't an issue, but um, that meeting is coming up. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City manager, any reports, sir? Thank you very much. City attorney, any reports, ma'am?
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
And my department heads. Oh, Daniel, I'm sorry. For whatever reason, I did not see your button. Let me, let me, let me go back just a little bit. Mr. Martinez, do you have a report, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to mention that this past weekend was the fifty-sixth Annual Chamber Dinner, the awards. So I wanted to congratulate the, the award winners. I myself was nominated for one. Um, and Mr. Casey was there, I believe you were in DC. All of staff was there. It was a wonderful evening. I know we have a chamber representative in-house still. She stayed the entire meeting, so thank you. Uh, and then I had one more thing. I wanted to thank, uh, senior water operator from the Public Works Department, Armando Hernandez. So there's a water main on Shushawn on my street that had been leaking. Uh, contacted city. Uh, Sam, let me know that it was after hours and that they were going to send someone out there at about ten-thirty at night. Armando came out, uh, tried fixing it, couldn't, came back and, and the next morning when we were leaving for church, he was there again, working on it, uh, getting the area blocked off, letting people know that, you know, it was leaking. I appreciate, he was the on-call guy that night, or that weekend, I guess, and, uh, his attention to detail, coming back out the next morning. Uh, so Sam, please let him know. I appreciate it. Uh, he was out there late that night and early that morning, so I just wanted to make sure I thanked him here.
Thank you, Martinez. And I, I didn't look to the, my left, or does anybody here have a report? No, okay. And I don't see the county supervisor here at all. So with that being said, we will now adjourn this meeting and go to closed session for a conference with legal counsel. California Government Code five-four-nine-five-six-nine or two potential cases, liability claims, California Code five-four-nine-five-six-ninety-five. Claimant is Mr. Rafid Koshabab and Toh One Incorporated. The agency claim against is, is the city of Series. A Conference of Labor Negotiator, California Government Code five-four-nine-five-seven. Agency-designated representatives are City Manager Douglas D. Dunford and Human Resource Director Delilah Vasquez. Employees organization are Series Police Office Association, First Line Supervisors, Confidential Bargaining Group, Laborers International Union of the North, America Launa, and Mid-Managers Bargaining Group and Public Safety. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in regard into this closed session at this time? Seeing none, and I will return to report out after the closed session. Thank you, everyone.
I'm mute myself.
Oh.
Me? Yeah, sure.
Okay, welcome back everyone. The first two items direction has been provided on the third item claim was denied five zero. Uh, detection, uh, the last item uh, direction has also been provided to staff. Thank you.